The Town Council of Corder Madera for Monday, March 2nd is now in session. Will the town clerk take a roll?
Councilmember Bailey.
Here.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Here.
Councilmember Ovazia.
Here.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Here.
Mayor Andrews.
Here. Will you join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item is open time. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless -- let me back up. Speakers will be limited to three minutes to discuss -- to speak on any item not on the agenda. The council will probably -- will not be able to respond to your comments, so if anybody would like to talk on a non-agenda item, please go ahead.
I'm Inga Morrison, 27 Lakeside Drive in Corder Madera. I'm not sure that this is not related to the -- or is related to the agenda later on. What I'm talking about in terms of the ADUs, tax assessment changes, is that going to be happening? And I just want to reiterate my concerns, and maybe it will be touched on the agenda, but I'm not sure. Additional parking, noise, increasing traffic, both people and cars, privacy, i.e. setbacks, as we're seeing with the last approval by Town Council on 35 Lakeside, where there's like minimal space all around that enormous monstrosity of a house.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
And then amount of rent. Does the rent have to be below?
You want to re-raise those when we're discussing ADUs, which is five?
Yeah, but don't I have to do it first because to see whether or not it has to do with the ADUs?
I think we're saying it is related to the ADUs.
There's another time.
Okay, I'll talk about that.
Any other comments? Not on the agenda.
I'm Don Wilburg, 13 Seminole. Four weeks ago, I was here for the project on Baltimore. Afterwards, when the applicant, their project was approved, I went up and talked to him, and the emotion in his eyes, and I mean, he just kept pumping my hand and just thanking me for saying things, and it was, you know, not just a normal thing, it was like relief. It was like, oh, my God, it's finally done. I'm -- anyway, so there was that emotion. And then I saw people leaving that on the other side who were angry and disappointed. I know Mark Madsen, and I know that he was really disappointed in the outcome. And I'm just going, what are we doing? What are we -- how come we're tearing our town apart? I'm a landscape architect. I've been through this process a couple hundred times. Forty-five years, I started in 1968. I've done parks and shopping centers, and I've got 45 projects in the Presidio. I've got a -- just finished a $44 million house and a $200 million house. I used to sit here in the seats as part of the design review board. I've had ordinances used by my neighbor against me, and I just wonder about this process. So I've come up with, just recently, I came up with, I was doing some reading, came up with an idea that sort of turns everything on its head. And I know I only have three minutes, so I probably have about 15 minutes of things to say. And so obviously, it's not going to happen tonight. I can talk at the end of the meeting. I can talk at another meeting, or I can not talk at all. So what's your pleasure?
Tease us.
We aren't supposed to respond to you.
That's fine.
But can you leave your name and number?
Yeah, you do have our contact information, right?
Okay, and we can approach you.
Yeah, I will make sure that everybody knows. 13 Seminole, Don Wilburg.
Good.
Pain in the neck.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay. 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 Open time is now closed. The next item is 5A, public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance.
Consent calendar, Jim.
I'm sorry, thank you. I skipped right over it. The consent calendar, the purpose of the consent calendar is to group items together which are routine or have been discussed previously and do not require further discussion. They will be approved by a single motion. Any member of the Town Council, Town staff, or public may request removal of an item for discussion. Anyone want to pull an item?
Move to approve items 4A through 4C.
Second.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Only some pool discussed.
Nobody?
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yeah.
Sorry. Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazia.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Okay. Okay. The next item is 5A, public hearing to consider introduction of ordinance number 993 to amend Chapter 18 dot 18, special purpose overlay district in 1831, accessory dwelling units related to accessory dwelling units regulations to make one, ADUs converted from existing floor space and all junior accessory dwelling units subject to the existing ADU capacity limits on Christmas Tree Hill Overlay District; and two, provide an option for discretionary review to allow non-claire-story windows in ADUs; and three, make non-substantive cleanup changes and clarifications to Chapter 1831. Adam?
Mr. Mayor, I have to recuse myself. My business sells prefab ADUs and presents a conflict of interest.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, though I have a disagreement about the conclusion on this, our Town Council has suggested that since I am a resident of Christmas Tree Hill, which is a smaller part of town, that it may present a conflict, and therefore, I am going to recuse myself until that is resolved. And I hope that council will explain why I may reappear during open time on this item as a person of interest. Thank you.
Through the mayor, if I may, I have advised Councilmember Kuhnhart that based on his ownership of a home in Christmas Tree Hill, that he may, under an applicable FPPC regulation, come back and give public comment on this item. He may stay in the room during public comment on this item, but at all other portions of this item, he needs to leave the chambers.
Thank you.
Good.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. This evening, you'll be considering amendments to Chapter 1818, special purpose overlay district, and Chapter 1831, accessory dwelling units related to the town's ADU regulations. The Town Council conducted a public hearing and introduced ordinance number 992 on December 3rd, 2019, to repeal and replace Chapter 1831 and to amend Chapters 1804, 1818, and 1820. The Town Council adopted ordinance number 992 on January 21st, 2020, and this ordinance has since gone into effect. The ADU regulations adopted in ordinance number 992 exempted from the existing ADU capacity limitations, ADUs that were created from existing floor space and junior accessory dwelling units. At the January 21st meeting, the Town Council raised concerns about allowing additional ADUs and JADUs within Christmas Tree Hill, given recent wildfires and public safety concerns. Based on those concerns, the council directed staff to return with amendments to the ordinance to further limit ADUs within Christmas Tree Hill. The Planning Commission held the public hearing on February 11th, 2020, to consider amendments to Chapter 1818 and 1831, to make ADUs constructed from existing floor space and JADUs subject to the capacity limitations, and also to make a variety of cleanup changes recommended by staff. Three members of the public provided comments at this hearing. One member spoke in opposition to limiting ADUs created from existing floor space and JADUs within Christmas Tree Hill, and two members of the public spoke in support of the amendments to make ADUs constructed from existing floor space subject to the existing ADU limitations. The Planning Commission approved a resolution by a four-to-one vote recommending that the Town Council adopt the proposed amendments to Chapter 1818 and 1831. And in addition, the commission included a revision to include an option for discretionary design review to allow for non-claire-story windows on ADUs. The town's ADU ordinance currently limits the number of ADUs in a substantial portion of Christmas Tree Hill, and these limitations apply to ADUs that add additional floor space. The Christmas Tree Hill Overlay District is comprised of 11 capacity districts, and each capacity district is allotted a certain number of ADUs. Of the 11 capacity districts, eight are currently at a maximum capacity and cannot support any additional ADUs. The proposed amendments to make all types of ADUs and JADUs subject to the capacity limits would preclude any additional ADUs in the majority of areas within Christmas Tree Hill. The town's ADU ordinance adopted in 2016, as well as the ordinance adopted in January, exempts ADUs within existing floor space such as garages, basements, or accessory structures from the capacity limits. Since 2016, public safety concerns about fire safety and evacuation challenges within Christmas Tree Hill have intensified because of recent wildfires. Based on these concerns, the Town Council will consider additional amendments to the recently adopted ADU ordinance, to make all types of ADUs and JADUs subject to the existing capacity limitations. The town has received several comment letters since the Town Council adopted ordinance 992 in January. Those letters are included as an attachment to your staff report. The public comments address safety concerns in Christmas Tree Hill, opposition to limiting ADUs and JADUs in Christmas Tree Hill, concerns with the window development standard, and potential privacy impacts resulting from allowing windows other than clear story. And there are three options the Town Council may consider tonight. The first is to introduce ordinance number 993. The second is to provide additional direction to staff about further amendments to the proposed ordinance. And lastly, the council may decide to take no action at this time. This concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Questions?
Yeah, I have one for staff. So this clearly puts us at odds with state law, right? Yes, I see you smiling.
I defer to council.
Am I wrong on that?
There is a provision that allows for the council to pose some limitations on ADUs based on public safety concerns and parking capacity and other types of utility capacity issues. The question is, there's some language that was added recently to the state law that seems to suggest that certain types of ADUs may not be restricted under that public safety exception. It's a little unclear at this point how those provisions will be construed. And so as we discussed, when the ordinance 992 came forward, there is a new process. All amendments to ADU ordinances do go through HCD. HCD has the opportunity to review and provide findings if HCD determines that the ordinance does not comply with state law. And so anything that would be adopted here would go forward to HCD, and we would have potentially have input from HCD about the extent to which any amendment is consistent with state law.
And then, do we know of any other towns in Marin that are having this issue and pursuing this at this point?
The City of Larkspur, we are aware that they have raised concerns about allowing ADUs in certain portions of their community, and the ordinance that they adopted limits all types of ADUs in the Madrone Canyon, and I think that's the only area. And I know they've submitted their ordinance to HCD, and have not received any comments back.
Thank you. I guess we'll open it for, I guess, public questions?
Mr. Mayor, public comment. Public comment.
Public comment. And we need to get the boys out of the kitchen.
You ready for a comment?
Yes.
I'm glad to, Michael Harlock, 533 Redwood Avenue. I am very glad to hear the requirement for the state to review this, which I think is in direct contradiction to state law. I live on Christmas Tree Hill. There's no question that Christmas Tree Hill, as in Chapman Hill, is hazardous from a fire point of view. That's the -- I don't think anybody's contending that. Is there existing congestion on the hill? I would say hardly. Only when the streets are blocked occasionally by construction. There's very minimal traffic, if you've been up there. So it's the, I really, the strongest point I want to make is I think this is unequal treatment under the law. You're treating similar zoning districts unequally. The allocation formula that was developed many years ago on Christmas Tree Hill was, I believe, arbitrary. It's, as Martha pointed out, most of those units have already been allocated, so that two current clients of mine that are single women would, under these restrictions, be prevented from adding an ADU within the existing structure. I think that's totally unfair. The problem, in my estimation, historically on Christmas Tree Hill on parking, and David is my neighbor, he can attest to this, is not recently granted ADUs, but grandfather apartments. Believe it or not, in our, David and my immediate vicinity, we have 12 illegal apartments, and they barely have one parking space each. So right around us, even though there are a lot of on-street parking, it is a congested parking area. I'll just leave you that, I think this is very unequal treatment. We have total ability, and people are tearing down houses, 1,000-square-foot house, and building 3,500-square-foot houses where FAR allows. And that is obviously not restricted, except by zoning. And that's probably adding more people to the hill than any small ADUs. So I'm very much opposed to this. It would be directly injurious to a couple of my current clients that are just completing applications for ADUs within their structure, and I do believe it's legally undefensible as unequal treatment to other areas in the town with the same zoning. In fact, if you could line up, make it easier.
Hi, my name's Charles Voorhees. I live at 29 Crescent Road. I'm here to comment on the ADU/JADU topic. My wife and I bought our home 35 years ago in 1985 and have been there ever since. This was before the Loma Prieta earthquake. It was before the Oakland Hills fire. And we have lived in our home as witness to many natural disasters subsequent to that, thankfully not immediate to us. But we have viewed these through the lens of concerned homeowners on Christmas Tree Hill. So all of my comments, I think, represent that, and I think they echo what Michael Harlock said, which is that we all take the safety seriously up there. It's not dismissed. The Christmas Tree Hill Special Overlay District was initially inspired by the Oakland Hills fire substantially because it was a real cowboy show up there for parking and everything. There were no defined parking spaces, and a Fiat 500 couldn't get up the street sometimes based on the way people parked. You know, it was really, really bad. So through a lot of community work, there were parking areas established, and a lot of work was done to make the hill a much safer, more navigable space. The gentlemen next door who do the fire protection have purchased special equipment to make it up there more safely. There've been turnout. There's been a lot of work done. A lot has been done since that initial overlay district and the restrictions which were established at that time. So a lot has changed, and I, I feel, I'm just highly concerned about this ordinance inasmuch as it's considered, in my opinion, to be kind of the equivalent of a taking of property rights. To, you know, I agree much with what Michael said. Christmas Tree Hill defies categorizing. It's, it's a place where you can have a home for $500,000 next to a home for $5 million. And it's not like a subdivision where it's very easy to go. Everything is uniform. It's all unique. It's a tumble-down cabin. It's the $3,500, 3,500-square-foot house that's, you know, built. It is not easily quantified, categorized, or anything. It's unique topography as you turn any given corner. And because of that, using numbers as just statistics don't make sense. Anyway.
Good evening. My name is David Kuhnhart. I, speaking as a private citizen on behalf of myself and my wife Susan, who've lived on Christmas Tree Hill for 24 years. For 22 of those 24 years that we've lived there, I've served on the Board of the Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers Association, three times as its president. Safety has always been a priority for us, and it's one reason that I now volunteer on the Steering Committee of the Christmas Tree Hill, NRG, as the Christmas Tree Hill Dwellers is now defunct. The Planning Commission recommendation made for safety is to prohibit any new ADUs or JDUs, see page 20, even if it's within the existing envelope of a structure. That contradicts state law, and it's misguided as a safety measure. The findings that you have that are on page three and are repeated on page eight are 26 years old. The findings that, about describing the nature of the hill, and they're no longer valid for much of our hill. Yes, the upper portion of the hill has narrow streets and few off-street parking spaces, but it is not true on the lower hill anymore. Vegetative fuel has been reduced, means of egress have been improved. And I would venture to say that no one now living on Christmas Tree Hill knows where those 11 districts are, where the allocations might be. I've never seen the map personally. I bet nobody really knows where they stand in that. The Planning Commission has, in fact, improved conditions on our hill. The Planning Commission has, and they can do that, they can continue to do that in a way without this blunt instrument of complete prohibition. Anytime a new ADU or JDU is proposed, or any renovation of a house is proposed, they can consider its location, lot size, available off-street parking, means of egress, safety considerations, they can and have required about 24 off-street parking spaces in the 24 years that I've been there. And they can continue to do that, to widen, in effect, to widen the streets and relieve that parking situation that is up there. Discretion can be applied. It doesn't have to be a blanket no. The blanket prohibition restricts our freedom of property use without just compensation. I'm surprised that I heard this same phrase just a moment ago. Owners of a four and a five-bedroom home like ours with adequate parking, four off-street parking spaces and egress, three of them, whose household has contracted should not be restricted from creating a second unit inside existing square footage with existing water and sewer hookups. To do that constitutes an uncompensated taking of real estate. It is often the case that JDUs are implemented where primary property owners have, their children have moved away, or a spouse has died, or both. It's a repurposing of space to allow people to age in space and age in place. Thank you very much for the opportunity to comment.
Is anybody else going to talk about the Christmas Tree Hill? Why don't you come up first?
Louise Brown, 9 Summit Drive. I've already spoken extensively at a number of meetings and written extensively on this issue, and you know my concerns about safety, public safety, and very, very concerned about adding density on the hill. I just wanted to address some of the comments that I've heard from both in the room today and also just in general, questions around why this makes sense, and, you know, are these criticisms valid? I would just like to counter them here. Some have said that this smacks of NIMBYism, and I just want to be really clear that we're not suggesting that more housing isn't needed. We know more housing is needed, but it needs to be done in a smart way, and it needs to be done in a way that protects residents of areas where we believe the density is already such that public safety is at risk should more people be added. I do agree that there have been improvements on the hill, but they're not sufficient. The roads still aren't wide enough. There are many places that are impassable. There are a lot of places where vegetation and fuel load are still high. Structures are made of wood. They're small, winding streets, and the access and egress ultimately comes down to one point at the bottom of the hill. And we are at 9 Summit Drive, which is the first house on Summit Drive, which goes all the way up to the top. And if you've ridden that on your bike or driven on that road, you know that it gets very windy very fast. If we had three households in our home and there were a raging fire coming down the hill, we would have three times the number of cars and people trying to get out of that property, and we would be the cork that would clog up the hill. It would be devastating. Some people have talked about this as spot zoning, and I think that, in my opinion, that's what zoning is. It's meant to address local conditions and the potential of an area based on an objective analysis of the conditions. That's why the special overlay district was originally identified. It's just the same reason that there should be specific zoning for flood zones. We have to think about specific areas and their physical limitations. And others have said that limiting JADUs and ADUs on the hill is not the answer to our fire danger and our public safety, and we would agree, just insofar as it's not the only answer. But it is one thing that we can do now with this state legislation in front of us. It's very timely, and we have to make meaningful incremental steps towards hardening our community. We urge you to move forward with the proposed revisions in ordinance 993, as written by staff and approved by the commission, and simultaneously support with urgency other efforts to create a comprehensive plan to prepare and protect Corder Madera from both fire and flood, including but not limited to undergrounding of power lines in high-risk areas, reduction of fuel load, improvements and widening of streets, demarcation of evacuation routes, potential downzoning, and more. Thank you.
Lucinda Smith, Altaway. I'm here asking the council to consider adding the similar conditions that you're talking about tonight for Christmas Tree Hill to the Chapman Hill. It is extremely difficult to move around in there. We do have one facet that is very different from what Christmas Tree Hill is, and we have a traffic situation that goes through from Camino Alto all the way around through Chapman. Chapman, Alto Way, and Sausalito after about 4:00 in the afternoon that would astound you. If anything were to happen, we, homeowners, could not get out. So, to add additional density in the area is not in the good health and safety of those of us that live up there. The infrastructure just will not support it. If you go on to more of the Fairview, Medrono, and those streets up there, there is one choke point right there at the corner of Medron or Fairview and Sausalito, and it is the same single access that Christmas Tree Hill has. So, I urge you to consider, and I have been, I know that Martha did not mention that I had spoken about oppositions to the additional openness of the additional ADUs and JDU's. I did speak at the Con at one of the meetings. If it wasn't the February 3 meeting, it was another meeting, but it was where they took the vote. So, I'm distressed that I can't get my voice heard. I appreciate that you're listening to it, but so far, nothing has been done, said, or has been considered, to my knowledge. The only reason that I'm down here is because I happened to see on one of the Chronicles, I think it was, that there was going to be a discussion about the ADUs, and we've had ADUs added. So, I am in opposition unless we have control on them so that we can control the density. Rest of my neighbors are not as, what should I say, informed, or they don't know what the situation really is, as I think you'll find money people in all of Corder Madera's situation. Thank you.
Anyone else?
I'm here to talk about the discretionary review allowance on cholesterol windows. Mike Anderson is my name. My wife, Shawna, live in East Corder Madera. We have the property next door to an individual who's planning to build an ADU on top of his garage. His garage looks directly down into our bedroom and bathroom. At one point in the process, there are provisions requiring cholesterol windows for additions within 15 feet of the property line. That requirement was put there to protect the privacy of individuals, neighbors. Council is considering an ordinance now to allow an option for discretionary review when an individual does not meet those requirements. This recommendation came about because our neighbor who, because his architect could not create a plan that would comply with building codes without having non-cholesterol windows. So, we'd have regular windows, and that was because, I think, egress issues or something of that nature. If he's successful in obtaining this exception, he's going to be looking right down into our bedroom, our bathroom, and front door. It's going to severely impinge on our privacy. The question is, how far are you willing to compromise the rights and privacies of existing homeowners to comply with the state's requirements for ADUs? We obviously have a vested interest in this, but where do you draw the line? And I'm hoping that if things like this come up in the future, that you apply very strict parameters to what an individual's allowed to do if they're outside of the provisions of the state's rules. Thank you.
I'll try again. Inge Morrison, Corder Madera, so 27 Lakeside. Because of the ADUs, we were talking about the additional parking, noise, increase of traffic, both people and cars, and privacy and setbacks. We have just been through this in our neighborhood on Lakeside. Nightmare. And then I want to know, is there a rule about how much the rent has to be? Does the rent have to be below market for the ADUs? Or does it, can it be, you know, what's the point of the ADU if not having reasonable rent? Owner occupancy? Is there owner occupancy? Or we can, I can buy a house and not live there and add an ADU, and I can rent out both. Is that correct? How does that increase housing? Minimum of rental time. I remember that that was brought up at another meeting we had. And is there a limit on the rental time for the ADUs? I think that Mr. Lee brought it up at one of the meetings. What are the time? And then what about, do we have to have separate meters for the electricity, water? And the sewer lines? Do we have to go through a big infrastructure process in Corder Madera in order to accommodate for sewer? Increase sewer? Increase power? Increase kids in school? Increase all, police, fire, everything? The ADUs are going to be a tremendous, if a lot of people have it, a tremendous strain on the whole infrastructure in Corder Madera. That's my comment.
Okay. Any more comments? Could you sort of briefly outline what the state law says about ADUs? Basically, if we had no zoning, what does the state say we've got to do? And then?
So, the state says you need to allow an ADU where you have an existing residence, and it establishes minimum sizes. So, it needs to be at least 850 square feet if it's a one-bedroom, and up to 1,000 square feet if it's a two-bedroom. It also limits, it allows for an ADU to be within four feet of a side and a rear yard setback. And if the property is at its maximum lot coverage and floor area, it allows for at least an 800-square-foot ADU. So, it's removing a lot of the restrictions that may have possibly been in place previously, and the intent is to encourage ADUs throughout communities, regardless of what's on the property currently. It has requirements related to owner occupancy. Previously, communities could require owner occupancy for either the primary residence or for the ADU, and that has been eliminated. So, now it's possible to rent out both the primary residence in addition to the ADU. In certain instances, you could also have an ADU and a JADU, and that can exist when your JADU is created within your existing residence. A JADU is a smaller ADU. It's no more than 500 square feet created from an existing bedroom. So, you could have the JADU within the house, and then you could have a detached ADU as well. It also allows for ADUs now in multifamily properties, and it limits a lot of the requirements that cities can impose. And we are allowed to have standards, but they need to be objective standards, and it's removing any discretionary review from an ADU. I would like to point out there, we have had some conversations with HCD about allowing, kind of meeting the minimum size of an ADU, and then having an option for discretionary review to be larger than that. So, that is something that the current ordinance does do. And then, one more thing, parking. There are certain instances where you do not need to provide parking spaces. For instance, if the ADU is within an existing structure, or if it's within a half-mile of a transit stop, then you do not need to provide parking for the ADU. And also, if a garage is converted from a garage to an ADU, you do not need to replace those parking spaces elsewhere on the lot.
Okay. Good. Can I ask a follow-up question?
Sure.
Go ahead.
So, essentially, doesn't it become an over-the-counter proposition for most of these?
For a lot of them, it does. If it is...
Which for clarification purposes means you go in, you put in an application...
You submit, you submit a building permit to the building department. It gets routed to all the departments. So, when planning is reviewing the building permit, we're verifying to make sure that the standards we have in our ordinance are being met. The only kind of exception to that is if it's an attached ADU, then that would be, an ADU permit would be the first step. But if it's a detached ADU, less than 800 square feet, or if it's the conversion of existing space, then that's when you would submit directly for a building permit.
And we do not, we cannot require them to get a separate water meter or a separate sewer hookup or anything like that? It's just, they piggyback off the main house?
Correct.
Pretty much.
You know, in some cases, for a detached structure, people may elect to get a separate meter, especially if they're planning to rent it out, but it is not required.
Okay.
They do have to meet the requirements for adequate sewage capacity and water capacity, all those things that are normally required to ensure that, the same way that an expansion of an existing house has to do the same thing.
But now, anything like this requires discretionary review and comes to the Planning Commission? Well, before this law was...
No, and I want to clarify that. Actually, it's been like this since 2001 for most ADUs. So, it's actually been a non-discretionary process, but there were sort of noticing requirements, and there were some aspects of ADUs that had a little bit more sort of standards tied to them. And one of the things, actually, we've been doing with this ordinance is getting rid of some what were supposed to be objective standards, but read more like subjective standards in the past, and now we're moving into a ordinance that has very clear black and white, do you meet it or not? So, it's been, but it's been, and just to the sense of the numbers, in 2018, I think we had seven ADUs that were, received building permits. That was, I think, the year before that, 2017. It might have been a little bit less than that. We're going to hear next council meeting with the Housing Element Annual Report, we'll hear again about how many ADUs we had in 2019. It's, I think, around seven or so again in 2019 for building permits. And prior to that, it was very much less, even though it was...
Does that include preserve it or rent over?
This, that will be counted, actually. That'll be counted in the following year because they're just getting their building permits now.
Good.
Just a couple of questions, sorry. First one's about process. I saw that in the report somewhere, it was submitted for state comments or something, which we're still waiting to hear back from.
Yeah, so, we submitted the ordinance to HCD on February 3. We have not yet received any comments from them. We're required to send our ordinance to them within 60 days. There's nothing in state law that gives them a timeline of when they need to provide us with comments, and they may choose not to provide us with comments. They don't necessarily, they're not required to.
And maybe Teresa needs to answer this, but would it be prudent to wait to get the comments if we're concerned about this is going to pass muster? Is there some urgency about the ordinance that expires or something if we don't? Or is there some reason why we need to? It's, just, I think there's something I'm missing. Why not wait and see what the state weighs in and then take action?
Well, I'll say, so, there's, it's a little confusing because there's two different ordinances, right? We passed the last one, so we currently are waiting for that one to see even if that one is compliant and...
And this is even more restrictive?
And this, yes, this will be more restrictive. We have to, I mean, that is a possibility, although they won't officially opine unless there is an actual ordinance passed. They will, they are offering technical assistance in respect to sending them some draft language. We would potentially get informal comments back, but they're not going to, as my understanding, not going to officially say yes or no until they actually are required to undertake that. And I, they are getting, they're inundated with this. There's a backlog of ordinances all throughout the state, but that is an option. I think that actually, we could potentially consider, I don't see why we couldn't, if that was something the council wanted to do, would be to get, you know, to get draft guidance on this particular ordinance from them.
Teresa, has you or your office done an analysis of whether we are violating state law by the current iteration of the proposed ordinance?
Violating state?
Well, in other words, is it contrary to the, what we understand to be, I understood that, what, why is that funny? Did I phrase that wrong?
Violating, it sounds like we're different.
And when you say current, you mean the ordinance that...
Proposed, not the one we did at the last meeting, but the one that's being discussed here today, the more restrictive component as it applies to Christmas Tree Hill. Have you analyzed whether, in your own view, those standards are objective enough, if you will, that they would survive scrutiny with the standards layout by the state law?
So, the, I'm sorry, the ordinance in front of you, and you're talking about the further restriction of ADUs and JADUs on Christmas Tree Hill.
That's my understanding.
Yes. With respect to that piece of the proposed ordinance in front of you, I think there is a question about whether that piece is consistent with state law.
Is it inappropriate for me to ask you to give an opinion on that? Is that why? I mean, just tell me, and if so, I'll back off, but if your office has made an opinion about whether it does or it doesn't, it would be meaningful to me.
So, you know, the, sometimes questions are asked that are attorney-client privileged.
Is this one of them?
This would certainly be, if you're asking me for a legal opinion, it certainly would be an attorney-client privileged matter. I can say that as to this particular question, there is language in the new state law that would suggest that what we're trying to do here may be problematic, but HCD has not yet determined how it's going to construe this provision, and we have received some initial conversations that are informal from HCD staff that suggests that we can do this.
That we can?
Yeah, I think there are, have been, I was going to say, informally, we've had conversations with HCD staff on this particular issue regarding allowing or precluding the ADUs within an existing structure. And the conversations I have had with, again, this staffer at HCD was, his, he was saying that that was not permitted. That was how they interpreted it. But, again, you know, I think it's hard to get an official opinion from them, and I certainly didn't take that as, we're hearing different things from different people, because, again, like we talked about, our colleagues are also reaching out, and there's a lot of different answers they're getting, but that is what I heard directly from the person in charge at HCD of the ADU ordinance discussion.
No, that's very helpful to me. Then the second question, sorry, guys, I'm almost done, has to do with the volume. I read somewhere in the report, four to six applications. Is that per year? Is that forever that we see ahead of us? Is that, what does that number refer to? How many junior accessory dwelling units do we reasonably anticipate over how long of a span?
So, we have never received an application for a junior accessory dwelling unit. As far as the ADUs, since 2017, when kind of the more recent state laws went into effect that removed a lot of barriers, I believe it's 27 ADUs.
27 since 2017?
Correct.
Okay.
And that includes the eight at the preserves or the...
So, it's more like, you know, less than 10, but in that range on an annual basis, roughly? And there'd be, is there any reason to think we're reaching, just from your perspectives, you know, I realize it's anecdotal observations, but that we're reaching a threshold here? Or does the pace seem consistent?
It seemed pretty consistent the last couple of years, and we do get quite a few questions at the public counter, people inquiring about ADUs.
Okay.
Following up on his question, do you get a sense for whether the folks who are applying to put in ADUs, whether they've been owners who will occupy the property, or somebody who's just sort of bought it and wants to?
I would say most common is for someone who resides at the property, and they, you know, create ADUs for a variety of reasons. For some people, it's to create space for a parent or a child who's graduated from college and looking for a place to live. I've also talked to several people where they are aging and they are looking to downsize and to still have an income, so they are interested in living in the ADU and then renting out the primary residence. But I think, you know, generally speaking, Marin County is such an expensive place. I don't think it makes a lot of sense to buy a property and then to not live there. Generally speaking, what I've seen is people who are pursuing ADUs, they reside on the property, and for one reason or another, it makes sense for them to add some, you know, an additional unit on their property.
And of the three options, number three is take no action at this time. What would be the implication of that? Would suddenly folks up on Christmas Tree Hill sort of get a bunch of vested rights that a future council would have problems removing, or what?
So, if there is no action taken... So, if there is no action taken at this time, then the interior ADUs and JADUs on Christmas Tree Hill would not be limited. So, if someone came in and wanted to convert a basement or an existing accessory structure, they would be able to do so.
We're talking interior?
Interior, yes.
Of an existing structure?
Of an existing floor space.
Okay.
But they would, if they wanted to add, do a detached ADU, or to do an attached ADU and create floor space, then those are subject to the existing capacity limitations. And as part of the ordinance 992 recently adopted, we created the five-year rule, which would require someone, if they did an addition or constructed a new structure, that they would have to be in existence for five years before they could convert it to an ADU. So, that's what currently exists.
Todd, or maybe for you or Adam, has either Scott Scherz, our fire chief, or Mike Norton, our police chief, or, who's running Public Works these days? Is it you? RJ, RJ. Have any of the three of them, RJ's excellent, by the way, have any of the three of them weighed in on whether they think that the specific, that the conditions are so, and we all recognize, it's an enormous fire danger, that they're so kind of intense that they have an opinion about this ordinance? In other words, are they concerned, have there any of those voiced concerns that this will noticeably worsen it in a way that they feel endangers life and safety and so forth?
I don't, I don't think it's really been presented to them in that sort of direct of a question. I think they're always concerned about adding more vehicles and more people to any place that's currently in fire danger.
Right.
But I can't, I don't want to speak for them and specifically say they have an opinion about this ordinance. They recognize a lot of this is also coming down through the state as well, and so they're not weighing in on sort of the legal opportunity they have.
No, I recognize the legal issue. I just meant in a practical way, one of the policy concerns that I'm struggling with is the relative immediacy of fire danger as opposed to basic property rights to develop your land, and there's a bit of a conflict here.
Well, yeah, and I think they would prefer, frankly, not just ADUs, but they would widen the scope and say, reduce density, period.
Right.
You know, in those fire areas.
I got it.
Can I ask a question? I had a conversation with Ruben, the fire marshal, about this this morning because I was in another meeting. Can I relay that, or is that--
Yeah, 100% you can.
I'm allowed to. Okay.
Yes, you are.
Thank you.
That would be important to me.
I talked to Ruben this morning, I was in another meeting with him--
Ruben's excellent.
Yes, who's our fire marshal. And he's, and also, I did a tour with him of Christmas Tree Hill recently, and looked at all the vegetation removal and everything. And he said he would restrict the number of units.
Oh, he would?
Yes. Increasing density, he said, is just not a good idea, because density is so high up there, and the roads are so incredibly narrow and so incredibly tight, that putting more people into that situation, he thinks, is not a good idea.
Okay.
That was his quote. I did try to get some more information, too.
If I may, through the mayor, the mayor, you asked a question before about whether, if you don't act now, you create some sort of vested right. You do not. The council, a future council, would be free to consider the same issue in front of you, again, with trying to understand what the, how to weigh the policy in light of state law. But a future council wouldn't be in any worse position than you are right now.
And, so, we have no idea when, when or if we'll hear back from HCD, or whatever it is, about the ordinance that currently exists, whether they approve or disapprove of it, and--
That's correct.
We want to go one step further.
Can I ask a question about the, same question, sort of, Theresa? Is there some statewide database that will provide sort of a continuum of what sorts of objective standards are being permitted and which ones aren't? In other words, every time a town like ours submits an ordinance, are you guys able to see what other towns have submitted? Are we, like, at the leading edge of this thing, or are we kind of in the pack?
I have not heard of any such database. I think it makes a lot of sense to post other ordinances. We can go to town, cities and towns' websites and look at their AD ordinances. We wouldn't know if they have received comments on said ordinances, but we could have follow-up conversations with their staff about that. And then also, HCD is going to be putting out a memo that clarifies a lot of the questions that--
And when is that anticipated?
It's unknown.
Six months?
I know, I know, I know they're working on it, but we don't have a definite date.
And I just, you know, we are discussing this at our, sort of, the Planning Directors' Group at the county and all the other jurisdictions, so there's some discussion amongst ourselves where we share information about who's doing what. And, but, I'm afraid, frankly, that there may even be different responses from different people at HCD when they get back on this, so we'll just have to wait and see how that plays out.
Okay.
But I know there's others that are very interested in this answer and getting a definitive interpretation of the state law and how that applies in these, whether cities have the ability to restrict ADUs in, for fire reasons, or for other of those traffic flow and those other specific things that the state law said you could restrict ADUs for.
As I vaguely recall, it was either the general plan or Housing Element, that when you submitted it, you had to submit it to Sacramento for review, you could actually track if they had a database of the following towns who submitted it and either approved or something. Do they do something comparable with this?
Yeah, they may be. I'm not, I think there's so many nuances with jurisdictions, despite the fact there's a lot of this is state law, there's so many different approaches, and maybe Theresa can speak a little bit more to this, but I know, you know, it runs the gamut of how people are, you know, we're, like, we are doing this two-step where you have some discretion over the windows. I mean, that's a very nuanced approach to having, allowing discretion in certain circumstances. Others, I think, are taking a very more literal approach that you, that's pushing it too far, you know? And I think it comes back a little bit to the overall approach towards ADUs in the first place through, in achieving some of the housing goals and whatnot as well, so. But there may very well, you know, we are a part of, we're going to be with other Marin County jurisdictions, posting all of our ordinances or links through a county website. That was, that's one of the projects we're working on this year with some grant funding, but that clearly will be, allow us to sort of track others, and we'll continue to do, we're following this on a, you know, monthly basis with other jurisdictions and what the responses they're getting.
There are, cities across the state are grappling with what to do here. There are many jurisdictions that have passed emergency ordinances to get something on the books that complied with state law, and then take a slower, long-term approach. HCD is, in my estimate, probably being inundated with ordinances at this point, and so I, it's very difficult to know, just from a staffing perspective, how quickly they can go through it, and they are also having to implement policies on how to construe the new state law, once they get these ordinances. So, I suspect it may take some time to sort through, and, you know, I know that Adam has had some conversations with staff, but I think it's a slow process.
And if, we totally lost our minds and just said, no ADUs. So, we're clearly in violation of the state law, no ifs, ands, or buts. What's the penalty?
Well, HCD would have, would come back and would likely tell you that you violated state law, and there is a period of time that you have to essentially do a meeting and confer with HCD and change your mind. If HCD determines that the, that you, at the end of that process, you still are not in compliance, it can be referred to the Attorney General for an enforcement action against the jurisdiction, and private parties may have some recourse as well.
So, an enforcement action means what?
The Attorney General sues the town, essentially.
And basically gets a court order saying, do it?
You would, we would walk through that process, yes.
All right.
Martha, what is the load, if you will, the understood load on a per-unit basis? Is it like one person and one car, roughly? Do we have a metric that we, you'd assume for planning purposes, you presume every time there's an ADU or J, and is it, are they different between an accessory dwelling unit and a junior accessory dwelling unit?
We don't have a metric, per se. You know, with a junior accessory dwelling unit, it's limited to 500 square feet, so it's essentially a conversion of a bedroom. So, I think one person, two absolute, absolute max. We don't have, we haven't been tracking the number of people that are living in these ADUs. The ordinance does include a provision where we can do annual surveys, so that will be something we'll be doing in the future, is tracking things like what rents being charged and who's residing in the ADU. But, but now, that's not information that we readily have.
But the expectation is approximately one additional person, and consequently, approximately one additional car?
Yeah, I would say one to two people, and then, and additional car.
Okay. Thank you. All right.
All right.
I mean, it's not clear to me, is it clear to you guys? Is it clear to me?
I have some thoughts, maybe, Jim? Go ahead. This is an incredibly difficult and--
Yeah.
--complex issue, as you can tell from all the questions and discussion we're having up here. Not easy to wrap your head around and figure out what the right thing to do is. But for me, what it comes down to is, our job as an elected official is to protect public health and safety. That's the first thing we do, period. And that is what I always come back to whenever I'm in question as to whether I should do something and how I should proceed. I'm going to steal a line from Ford Green, he used it in a meeting last week. I know, I know, I know.
Mine was going so well.
It's good, it's good. It's March right now, but it's June, as far as the weather's concerned, okay? The climate is changing, fire danger is increasing. I don't think it's going to get any better. And the issue that I am concerned about with this, obviously, if we don't do this, is that we have the opportunity to dramatically increase density on Christmas Tree Hill. It could happen, and it could happen quite easily, it could happen quickly, and without a lot of public input, as we've demonstrated, because a lot of this is going to be over the counter. One of the comments that the public made was that this is taking away property rights. I don't really see it quite as a taking away property rights, because this is an existing, I guess, ordinance and application that's been in place for years, and all we're doing is extending it into the new state law. So, I don't really see it as a huge change from that aspect. And really, what we're doing is we're taking that existing set of laws, and we're just applying it to this new state law and moving forward with that. And as I said, I did talk to Ruben this morning, and, who I have enormous respect for, and I think that the fire danger on Christmas Tree Hill is huge, and increasing density is going to dramatically increase, potentially increase, that danger. I don't think we're going to be alone in this. I think there's going to be other towns in this. I called Mark Levine and spoke to him about it, and he is willing to coordinate with other towns in the area, in Marin County, with some sort of effort to help us work with this, because we're not going to be the only ones that have this issue, right? As you heard, Mark Spurts already talking about--
Right.
Ten Hills is going to have it, Mill Valley's going to have it, anybody who's got hills is going to have this issue. So, we're going to have to figure this out, and the state's going to have to figure something out. So, for all of those reasons, I would go ahead, and I would move forward with this. That's right.
Jim, do you have a strong view on this?
Oh, I'm sorry, can I have one more thing?
Sure.
I would also ask staff to talk about Upper Chapman and consider Upper Chapman, because that is disastrous up there. I walk, I walk that area as well, and, yeah, Alta, you're absolutely right, is just, because what's happening, Waze is putting people through there at rush hour to get them off the main roads, and so the traffic's getting worse, the road is single lane, you can't really widen it. So, I would ask that we consider the same thing up there. Sorry. Yes, and, you know, I'm just thinking back to when we first heard of these ordinances, and we were talking to various people from Sacramento, and as you'll recall, I kept raising environmental risk is something that they needed to consider. And they just, phew, right over their heads. You know, there was, I believe, someone from Tiburon raised the issue of, well, you know, we've got cars and so on, and it's unsafe, and, you know, the response from the, someone from San Francisco was, oh, we'll just paint your curbs red. And the response was, the roads don't have curbs, okay? And this was from somebody in another jurisdiction. So, I think we need to start pushing back against state mandates like this that are in, just ignore the health and safety risk of increasing densification, so that's where I come out.
So, you guys are both, pretty much, in favor already of the existing newly restrictive ordinance? A little slightly more restrictive, right?
You mean the one we already passed?
No, 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 the one being proposed, introducing the--
Yes, I'm in favor of introducing--
Right, and you're also in favor of it.
993, yes.
Yes. Okay, I mean, I don't, I'm not going to push back hard on that, because I, both of you were frankly very persuasive to me. Where I come down on this is that I have, I start from a place of, when you own a property, you have a right to do with it as you like. That is where I start with, under the Constitution. So, I get concerned when we start mixing broader philosophical concepts with very local policies, which is what we have to do here today, because I'm very sensitive, as we all are and everybody in the audience knows, to the potentially catastrophic fire danger we suffer here in Corder Medera. So, how do you match this basic constitutional right with an overwhelming right to life, which is, we're all going to die from fire if we're overly dense? And it's a terrible thing to try to weigh the danger of a fire and the impact of density against your basic property right. The state law thing is of concern to me, it's not clear to me. So, I'm a little, I'm also a little apprehensive about doing anything when we could sort of wait and see. I've never been one, I hope, I'd like to think you guys know this about me now, I'm not one to wait and see generally. I'd rather just do it and then we'll figure it out later, but this is one of those where I'm tempted to wait and see from guidance from the state about what's permissible or not. But Bob, you're frankly very persuasive to me, as are you, Jim, about if in doubt, we should err on the side of protecting our people, right? So, if I'm, if it's not clear to me whether or not this should be the right thing to do in the interim, it's probably better to err on the side of, in the event, and if we're entering another drought now especially, in the event of a fire, we have not worsened the problem, we have not made it worse and harder for people to escape. The quantum is important to me, too. If we can reasonably anticipate eight or 10 more, by the way, was that in the whole town or in the Christmas Tree Hill area?
That was the whole town. Within Christmas Tree Hill, there have been five ADUs, four have been interior, and one was a new structure.
Over the last three years?
Yes.
So, I mean, it doesn't, it strikes me a little bit like, I know we need to draw a line in the sand somewhere, gentlemen, but it's a, like, real small problem here, the number of additional, and yet, how many would it take if somebody so aptly put to have a chokehold on the rest of us trying to escape? If there's only two, you know what I mean? Two or three additional people loaded up on Christmas Tree Hill per year, sounds pretty light to me, but--
And where they park their car.
Yeah, it does. I feel like the answer to this is not, or the real question here is not really junior accessory dwelling units. I really think that that's, the load is pretty light. It's, are we doing enough as reasonably promptly and diligently as we can to otherwise mitigate the danger of fire by widening streets, providing other places to park, having escape routes? What do you call it when you, when you, when you thin out the vegetation? You know what I mean, there's that whole laundry list.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, so, but anyway, I'm sorry to blather on, I'm with you. If somebody wants to make a motion, I'll second it.
I just wanted to add one thing. If, if I knew we'd get an answer from the state in 30 days, or 60 days--
But why not, a year, it'll, the difference will be five people at most.
I don't think so. I think what could happen, what could very much have happened is that, because people are concerned that, you know, this might not go forward--
Yeah.
You're going to have a rush, and people are going to want to apply for units and put-- You're going to have a rush and people are going to want to apply for units and put units through.
Right.
I mean, that's, if I owned a unit up there and I wanted to get a unit up, that's what I would do. I would, I would push it through as quickly as possible while the law was like it was if I thought it might change.
But to be clear, the only reason not to do this is one of fire and safety danger. I do think generally people ought to be allowed to do it and that the one, I get a whiff occasionally when people speak genuinely, but I occasionally get a whiff of people who just don't want any development of any kind ever. And I recognize the fact that our town is fully built out, but we have to recognize each other's rights to at least modestly improve our properties. Anyway...
And we're going to be asked to put in a heck of a lot more units in the next few years.
Right.
And all I'm, the only reason I'm for this is that we're saying this one area has special dangers.
Well, we're also saying, right, I'm with you. The other thing you said, which was really persuasive to me, I'd forgotten, all we're doing is trying to blunt what is otherwise a purely ministerial review. If somebody wants to add an accessory dwelling unit or a junior accessory dwelling unit, a 500 square feet or less spot, they can still do it. It's just kind of a pain in the rear for them now because they have to like go through the normal planning process, right? It's not like they can't... Normal restrictions and, right?
There's restrictions on the density, too.
So it's not possible for them to do, they would have to get...
They chopped up Christmas Tree Hill, 11 zones and once maxed out.
The zone thing was confusing to me.
Oh, okay.
So the majority of zones in Christmas Tree Hill are at their maximum capacity.
Oh, so it's not possible, like zero then?
So yeah, there's 11 districts and eight of those are at the maximum. So there's...
So right now, if you're in one of those eight districts, you cannot add any unit to your house at all, zero? Okay.
But that law's been in place since when?
Since the 90s. The capacities has been...
This isn't a new thing.
No, it's been that way for 25, 30 years.
It's been that way for a long time. It's not like we're suddenly changing.
Right.
Just to be clear on that, it was, it was, there was the capacity zones in place since 2001, actually may have been before that slightly. It was with the overlay district, 1994. In 2016, when we went through the ordinance changes for the first round of state legislation related to accessory dwelling units, we did exempt interior ADUs and JADUs from that capacity limitation in 2016, at the end of that year. So for the last three years, that has not, those interior accessory dwelling units have been allowed in excess of the capacity. So this would be going back to what we had.
Yeah, I'm sorry to confuse the issue, guys. The reason I said that, I remember 100 years ago when I was on the Planning Commission, we saw multiple applications on Christmas Tree Hill, but it must have been in districts that are not to capacity or something. Or maybe it was new construction. But in any event, okay, I'm with you.
I move to introduce ordinance number 993. One second. Sorry.
Councilmember Bailey?
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhardt recused. Councilmember Avasio?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman recused. Mayor Andrews?
Yes.
So those guys are both, thank you. Those guys are both in time. They would like to see more JADUs.
The next item is 6A, Discussion of How the Town Currently Evaluates View Impacts in the Review of Residential Development Projects.
It's just part of it. It just goes along with it? It's not even discussed. It just got pushed in with everything else. That's unbelievable.
Should call order. Clap them?
That's unbelievable. Unbelievable. Not even commented on. Incredible.
Okay.
All right, I called the next item.
Sorry, one second. Okay, so, so this is going to be a verbal report this evening. All of you tonight have your staff reports. This is really an item for discussion of how the town currently evaluates view impacts in the review of residential development projects and direction to staff regarding whether to initiate a work program to develop further policies to guide the town's evaluation The issue of views and what constitutes a significant view impact in the evaluation of new residential development is one that, as we all know, crops up periodically and oftentimes can create controversy in our neighborhoods and consume a significant amount of town resources. As a result, this was one of the areas that was identified by the town council in its last strategic planning meeting for consideration. And staff wanted to come back to the town council and check in and have a discussion and receive feedback from the council regarding whether it feels we have adequate view evaluation methods and tools in our current processes, or whether we should be looking to develop more guidance or even an ordinance on this issue. As the staff report explains, the issue of views arises during the evaluation of findings that are associated with the design, with design review applications. Most recently, the town council coincidentally had a recent hearing where the council looked at this during its review of the repeal of 223 Baltimore Avenue. The finding that I'm referring to is on page one of your staff report and it's finding number three of section 1830.070 of the town zoning ordinance. It says, "The project, in order to approve a project, the town council or staff or the planning commission must affirmatively make this finding. The project will not significantly and adversely affect the views, sunlight, or privacy of any nearby residences, et cetera, et cetera." So in considering whether this finding can be made, the Corder Madira general plan offers some policy statements about the need to balance the needs of the homeowner with the potential neighborhood impacts affecting views and the need to conduct an evaluation on a case-by-case basis in consideration of the unique conditions of the property proposed for development. But there is really little guidance in town's current ordinances and general plan as to what criteria should be used in striking this appropriate balance or what information should be included in case, in the case-by-case assessment of a view. So staffs, you know, over the almost six years now that I've, I've been here, we've been grappling as staff with this issue. Staff obviously has a role. We approve design review applications at a staff level. Most of the time, they're at the planning commission, I should say. Yeah, most of them are actually approved at the staff level. The planning commission obviously sees this quite often as well. And then on appeal, a few of these cases, I think six in the last five years, as they say in the staff report, have ended up in front of the town council. We've tried to, you know, take lessons learned, see what's worked and what hasn't. And I think we've taken a number of concrete actions that we think have limited the number of projects that have resulted in view-related issues and have tried to provide a strong, objective, and evidence-based foundation by presenting, and this is more recent, trying to present more consistent information into that evaluation process for decision-makers to evaluate view impacts in cases where they remain a concern. Those efforts that we've undertaken really fall into trying to ensure that early on in the design development of a residential project, that applicants are reaching out to their neighbors and that view considerations are being developed into the design of the project from the get-go. It's much harder once somebody has already gone down the road of paying their architects and designing the exact room and the layout that they want to, at the end of the day, you know, to get into a process and then all of a sudden have to try to address a view impact. So it's not always possible. We're only often aware of view impacts when a neighbor actually comes forward and says there are issues. But we try to do that by, we've changed our application requirements to make sure that neighbors explain exactly what they've done to reach out to their neighbors in developing their application. We've, as, as you know, we've, we've started a preliminary review application process where we offer applicants opportunity to come at a very early part of their design development and hold a meeting in front of the planning commission, invite the public to come and, and get a, before they submit an application, get an early reading on what comments they have and what the concerns may be from residents. Secondly, we've, have new story, we've implemented about three years ago, story poll requirements that require surveyors to verify that those polls are actually where they're supposed to be at the right elevations, up to a six-inch sort of difference. And I think that just takes an element out of the conversation that sometimes can create some distrust or mistrust and some element of sort of, it has the potential to go off track and get the conversation off track there. And then thirdly, you know, at a staff level, we've developed an internal policy where we really are trying to be more methodical about the evidence and information we try to bring to these discussions so that it's consistent and at least we're bringing that same information to the decision-makers, whether that's us or whether that's the planning commission or the town council at the end of the day. That's included in attachment three. We included that here, which just sort of lays out some of the things that we've gotten into in the past, even down to the type of millimeter lens we want to use for taking photos and what rooms we want to take images of, how to bring all that information to bear in a, again, a consistent way into the, the public hearing process or at a staff level and when we make decisions. What we've also done as part of that, and this has been, I think, more implicit, but more recently want to make it more explicit, is asking the same questions. And, and that starts to get at the evaluation process. And so if you see on the third page of that internal policy, which is now not so much an internal policy because it's, we're going to be sharing it with everybody, but you know, the questions about what is, basic questions about what is the content of the view, describing near, mid, and long-range features? Where are the views obtained? Are they from a heavily utilized area of the property? Is the impacted view from an area of the property that is designed oriented to take advantage of the view? How much of the near, mid-range, long-range features from a property are impacted? Are they partially or fully blocked? What is the content of the views that are not affected, which I think is also important? And then, of course, the catch-all, are there other factors? So those, that's what we've tried to do. We think, you know, through this process, we've, are, we have something that works relatively well. I think what's, from my perspective, what we have to this point is something that allows a high degree of flexibility in the decision-making process, which I know can be difficult because it doesn't sort of cull some of the claims that are made from people who feel that their views are impacted. But at the same time, it allows for all the information and all those things to come into the decision-making process, all the evidence. And through a very transparent and sort of evidence-based way, allows decision-makers to explain and express exactly why they may or may not feel that a view is significantly and adversely impacted. And there's a whole host of things that those decisions have been based on. And I think generally, town decision-makers have focused on things such as what we've talked about, primary views a lot. Heavily utilized areas of properties are generally thought to be more important than maybe less utilized areas. There are features in town, the bay in Mount Tam, that are, I think implicitly thought of from many decision, you know, many people who have sat on this desk and the planning commission, that's very important versus some other features. But I think not explicitly stating that there are very rigid rules about what is important and what's not allows for that to happen in a more organic way than if you had some rules that I think could very well lead to some unintended consequences because each case can be very unique and we've seen it time and time again. You just can't anticipate all the ways that a particular homeowner might be impacted or what's important to one individual and not another. So with, with that, I think I do, in the staff report, call out that there could be a way to actually make what's implicit, which I just mentioned, a little bit more explicit while allowing still for, you know, heavily caveat and say it's not a hard and fast rule, but could start to talk about more explicitly some of these guidelines for how to weigh and balance what's important in this view evaluation process through, on page four. I just, these are just meant to be examples, but through some statements about what's more important relative to others. And that's one area. So I think I've laid out a couple of options for direction. One is, you know, we have, like I said, I think we have a relatively good process. This is something that all towns that actually get into views deal with. I've talked to the community development directors over the years of Sausalito and Tiburon and everywhere where they have views. These issues come up. There's no silver bullet. I want to make that pretty clear that at least I haven't seen one to this point. But we could continue on what we have today and continue to work on trying to make our sort of staff continue to try to improve our processes to help reduce the, minimize the number of view impacts and claims that we have and concerns that we get. We could start to take direction from the council to develop further policies, such as sort of these guidelines, which I outlined on page four as sort of examples. Work with the planning commission on that to develop some guidelines that may help at least frame what we should be looking at as a town. Again, not a hard and fast rule there. And then the other option would be to sort of try to drill down into a more rigid ordinance. I'm not really recommending that, but it is something that we could research further and come back and talk about with, you know, with the council. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Any council questions?
I've got a question. Definitely, I appreciate the very thorough staff report here. My question is just, I'm intrigued by the options we have before, so I just wanted to ask before we consider investing staff time in developing potentially further policies, is it fair to say that jurisdictions that do have view ordinances see fewer view-related planning appeals at the council level?
From the, from the ordinances or from the folks that I have talked to, I don't see it. I think, and I'm specifically talking to Sausalito and Tiburon, you know, I think it's, we're on a pace, a little bit more than one a year, which I think is, is pretty similar to what you get in, in other jurisdictions. I don't, I don't have any research to tell me that, or data to say whether or not, but yeah.
That's helpful. Thank you.
I want to ask a question. On page two of the staff thing, it says a, "View is a scene from a residence and/or its active use area and includes both upslope and downslope scenes." Do you rank, you know, very, you know, where the scenes are? Picture window in a living room, is that here? The view from the clear story in the bathroom is down here?
Well, I think all of that, there's no official ranking, no. But I think all of that is part of the evaluation process that whether it's the planning commission or staff or the town council does when they determine whether something is significant, a significant view impact. So, you know, from staff's perspective, we, there's, there's clearly a sort of a, I think there is a hierarchy that we fall back on, but it could be... think there is a hierarchy that we fall back on, but it could be, because there's no rules, the next, if the staff changes and certain values change and whatnot, that could change with it, you know? So it's also, the same goes for the planning commission and the council. If, if the individuals on and as a body, this body feels, you know, strongly about certain, you know, windows being more important, certain rooms being more important, that can change along with the perspective of the individuals on those commission or the council.
But the guideline?
There is no, there is no, there is no guideline currently, no.
Why was this called a guideline?
No, I, where, in the?
Somewhere in here.
Page four, I said, nonetheless, some high-level guidelines that allow for and even anticipate exceptions from the start to these guidelines. Oh, I'm sorry.
The staff?
View policies and guidelines into a plan is, I think that's meant in the general sense. I don't think it's intended to be like an objective set of criteria, you know what I mean?
Right, and there's nothing in, there's nothing in here that-
I was thinking of-
Okay.
Once this is written, folks get in the habit of using-
Yeah, that's right, there's, there's nothing in here that speaks to windows or whatnot in this. These are just questions that we ask ourselves.
And I guess I'm throwing out another question.
Oh.
Which is, do you need to make a, think about the, where the view is and, you know, primary and secondary views and so on?
I think that's in two, exactly. That's what we're trying to get at in two A and B. Is it heavily utilized area of the property? Is the impacted view from an area of the property that is designed to orient to take advantage of the view? So, yes, so there may be, those are up for clearly interpretation. Somebody may say they heavily utilize certain portions of their house more than somebody else, right? And so I think that's where the flexibility, I think, allows that to be considered on a case-by-case basis, rather than just saying the master bedroom is the only place where a view, versus another bedroom is the only place where that view is, can be impacted from. And just anecdotal, I did ask, that's sort of how Sausalito works theirs, and they say, well, they, they go to, they've been to houses where people have staged their accessory bedroom as their master bedroom, say, this is our master bedroom. You know, so it, you, it all gets contorted to, in some respect, and so I think as you drill down and try to define what is a master bed, even master bedroom, what is the view of, we would have, we could have debates over what is Mount Tam really mean? Is it, how far down the slopes do we talk about Mount Tam? Is it there, is it just the top? Is it, you know, so, you know, I think that's where, I think the, trying to do that is you, my feeling is we would get caught up in just many, many, many meetings of trying to get through that conversation, whereas now I think we do have the ability to talk about it freely in front of what that means to the decision-makers as they, as they take in that information.
David, you honored. Is it your view that the present language is ambiguous and invites appeals?
Well, I think that's almost another conversation to have about the finding itself, I think is what you're referring to, what significant, is that what you're referring to?
I was referring to the items on page eight that are in the present guidelines. A view is policy CD 2.5. A view, view definition is a scene from a residence and/or its active use area, such as a yard or deck.
No, I don't think, I mean, I think, I think there are things if we wanted to, yeah, I mean, there are things that could be done if we wanted to just categorically restrict, I think, the level, the, and say, no view, a view is not a view from, sorry, a view is not a view if it's outside the house, for example. I mean, you could do some clear-cut things where that would just, you know, laterally sort of take certain claims off the table. That, if you wanted to get further restrictive, clearly we could go as far as removing the word "view" from that finding itself. But I don't think it's, I think, so in that way, yes, it does invite more, I would say, more technical claims than otherwise, but it doesn't necessarily address the issue that people, neighbors may have, and actually, you know, about actual impacts to people. But, but there are, and I, and I think that's, that's actually a good point, that I'm, I'm sort of operating under the assumption that we're keeping sort of views within our findings as something that should be evaluated and keeping a fairly broad interpretation of view from the get-go, yeah.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, our desire, as always, would be to have something black and white, simple, clear, and you're saying, we don't want that, that actually is going to create more problems, we should keep some, you know, balance in here and keep some vagueness about it because there's going to be judgment involved and it's just, that's how we're going to have to deal with this kind of thing.
Although, yes, although, I think so, although the gentleman who spoke at open time makes me, I'm curious what he has to say about that, too. But I think, yes, I think that's, it is, it's a difficult process, I think, but I think it's one that we'll try, you know, we can try to improve the emotional aspect of it and try to address the people's concerns, but I think there's more subjectivity and more flexibility is actually, if we're really trying to address people's view impacts is a better approach than starting to create hard and fast rules.
And related to that, in the appeal that we just dealt with a few weeks ago, I know one of the planning commissioners had said that there was a Mount Tam view and a Mount Tam view has to be preserved above all else, and is there anything in the ordinance anywhere that states that or was that sort of a judgment?
So, so under, it is just, there's nothing that states that other than there's some discussion about, in the general plan, about what, Corder Madera has some of the most beautiful and captivating views of any Bay Area community, this is on, I guess, page eight, with the backdrop of Mount Tam to the west, et cetera, you know, San Francisco Bay in the foreground to the east, da-da-da, and so it just, it's generally recognized, but no, there is no rule that says you cannot block a Mount Tam view.
Of any kind, okay. And if we were to adapt guidelines, do you think it would ultimately result in fewer appeals to the town council theoretically?
It's a good question, I, I think-
Everything we deal with is, is above views.
Yes. Yeah, I think, I think it may, I don't know, because I think it's hard to say whether actually creating guidelines would encourage more people because the guideline says generally, this is more important to that, that they can then block somebody's, what is not considered the, you know, it's considered in a, in a guideline, some lesser view. And I don't know if that, most of the time, I actually feel like the appeals are, people, they happen because of personality differences amongst the neighbors or somehow the process has not, the communication started off in the wrong fashion or manner. Two-two-three Baltimore is a good example. I think it, like I was saying, they didn't have one comment in opposition until the day of the hearing at the planning commission where they first found that some neighbors were concerned, and they tried to reach out early, but people misinterpreted the, the information that they got, which is, it just happened, you know, it's sort of one of these unfortunate circumstance, and those tend to lead to sort of entrenched, you know, feelings that ultimately will lead, be the factor that leads to an appeal, rather than if, you know, there's tweet, you know, they're working through it and it gets, people tend to try to work it, work those things out, a lot of the ones that we see, small changes here and there. But, you know, that's, so I don't, I don't know, I find that appeals tend to be more based on just the people involved rather than predictive of, you know, the actual impact that you're seeing on a view.
Thank you. I have a question about the, is the official title of it is the Planning Department Guidelines for Evaluating Views. When was this fully pulled together or is it, this is sort of the latest iteration?
Yeah, yeah, so the most recent, we added these questions most recently, and this was sort of in, in discussions with the last application we saw. The first part of this, we started maybe a few years, you know, a few years ago, we looked at it, for the first time, started drafting this. I think it was the first, what it came, what it really happened was when we had all these conversations about the millimeter lens and how to actually gather evidence and how to properly do it, so it's, we doing that consistent. So it's, it's, it's definitely something that's a living document that I'll go in sometimes and just tweak a little bit here and there, but it's, it is something more for staff, trying to give staff some help in, in sort of how they go about and talk to, when they go out and evaluate or just gather information really, just start with it.
If this was done years ago, I could see it addressing a number of controversies that I-
Yeah, and I-
-were living through.
Right, and I wish, trust me, I wish, I wish we had, but, you know, it's, and so it's trying to take some lessons learned and put them into some guidelines or, you know, some, yes, some ways of consistently coming at this issue.
I have a couple more questions.
Should we get a public comment or is that not something we do for discussion?
Yeah, we're going to get a public comment.
We could do that, but when we're talking about view evaluation?
Yes.
Would it make sense that, question five, what view mitigations are available so that folks can sort of think about it?
Yeah, sure.
Move your building over three feet.
Actually, in another draft we have, I think we did take some of those, some of that, it wasn't worded directly like that, but what opportunities may be available or something like that, considering to reduce or minimize view impacts, yeah.
Anyway, public comment? Go for it.
My name is Christine Martin, I live on the east side of Corder Madera, and I recently, well, very recently, I went through the planning commission and we remodeled our house. And then we had cause to, we felt, have some concern with our neighbors that were doing a remodel. And we felt that it impacted our house negatively. We may have appealed it, but the whole process was so denigrating, really. It was a bit, I felt biased from the beginning when the planners, when the staffers came over to our house. The pictures were from all over our house, even though there was implied consent. There wasn't consent that from every angle of our house that our pictures could be posted publicly. There were, was a letter from our neighbors that discussed my husband's disability and where we could go and what was important, and it was more important to go to a restaurant than be in our own home. And what I would expect from the planners is that they lay out, you said there was a pre-planning, which I think is a really good idea. We didn't get final plans from our neighbors. We got preliminary plans without any kind of elevations, so there was a breakdown. I think it could have been better. I think that the staffers could have laid out what was important, who was important to get, some considerations that they could have made. I also think that a summary of what went into the decision-makers from the planners would have been good, because that process is opaque. I just learned actually today that the upstairs bedroom, that is a small bedroom, it does not have a bathroom, it's not unsweet, it's teeny, and has a seasonal water view, went into their considerations for my house having a water view. I didn't even know that till today. And so this is a very opaque thing. I do believe that they try their best, but they're people with biases. And I'm not saying to completely codify this process, I understand that would be difficult, there are a lot of things to consider. Codify the pictures, make sure you have it from one angle, this angle, and the other. Give people an opportunity to say, no, I mean, I don't want every angle of my house exposed. We're talking about this, this one piece. It was not a positive experience from that, from that piece, and I really didn't know where to take it. I didn't want to make the biggest deal of it, it was traumatic, didn't want to come to the city council and expose my husband's disability and whatnot. I just want you to take that into consideration. It should be somewhat laid out. Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer Larson at Willow, and I just want to say I really feel for you. It's, it's hard.
It's a, it's a, it's a long time.
Yeah, it does, it does. And the gentleman that came up here, I think the first person to speak, talked about, you know, the community being ripped apart, ripped, maybe not the right word, but being divided, and we just so don't need that. So I want to say thank you to Adam, who's taken this on, and he said he was going to take it on, and he did. So to me, that's a really big deal, and so thank you. A couple of things I think could be very useful, and when my hearing was up four years ago, there was a guy, I think he was in high school, with a pocket protector, and he came up and stood here and said, you guys, why don't you get graph paper? And at first, everybody kind of laughed at him, but two or four hours into the meeting, we all thought, goodness, that would be a fantastic idea, it doesn't have to be the limiting factor, but it sure could go a long way to be an objective look at what the view impact is. So if you have a 10-foot view and all of a sudden it looks like the building is going to take up 80% of that view, you would simply graph it out, and that would be one aspect. I think getting upfront sign-off from all of your neighbors is critically important, whether it's quote-unquote "a ministerial review" or discretionary review, and I think anything that goes out to the neighbors that talks about what the plans are going to look like should be vetted by the planning department, so that your neighbor can't send you something that really doesn't bear any relevance to what they're going to construct and then leave it up to you as a layperson to try and figure out the elevations and so forth. And I realize that's an extra step for the planning department, but ultimately it could save all of, a huge hassle. I really like the idea about the story polls, that's fantastic, and that could also save a lot of headache. Something else that I think would be important is to get the neighbors to walk inside the house that's already existing that has an issue with the view, because even from the outside, you can look in somebody's window and think, oh, I'm not going to bother them, right? I'm not going to bother them. You really have no idea what they're looking out on, what their elevation inside is, et cetera, and if you're three feet, four feet different, it's a huge impact. Either it means that you can see Mount Tam or you can't. Either it means that you can see Mount Tam, or you can't. So just have them walk in somebody's house for 10 minutes, take a quick tour, and those are my suggestions. One, sorry, one more thing, I also think views for everybody should be important. And thank you to Adam.
Any more questions? Councilmember comments?
I'm very glad to hear the thinking of Adam in this circumstance. I also think that it's very, it is very important to try to have that initial conversation in any development, to, to really be as, as honest as possible, and I don't know how much brokering that, that the planning staff can actually do in all circumstances, but it, it sure is helpful. And in, certainly in any sizable development, story polls are really superb at telling the story of what's happening. Excuse me. I have a feeling that the existing standards, particularly as, as shown on page eight, are so general that anybody can try to drive a, a truck of interpretation in one, one side or the other side. A view is seen from a residence and/or its active use area such as a yard or a deck, and includes both upslope and downslope scenes. I mean, that essentially means anything goes. And given the fact that most properties in one way or another have a front and a back and a side, and in a suburban community, the sides, most of the time, can't have views because there is somebody that's relatively close, we have to start distinguishing and talking about primary views, main living areas. I like your, on page four, your suggestion of, the, the first and third of those suggestions on page four, which are, if I can get back to it, views from an area of one's property that are highly utilized and designed or oriented to take advantage of a particular view. That would be the, you know, the, the living room window that is designed, or, or indeed the, the outdoor active living area that was specifically oriented to take advantage of the Mount Tam view. But it would avoid the circumstance of, this, this is a real thing that happened to a solar project in the East Bay. A fellow came forward, and the Water District was about to invest several million dollars for a solar array up on a plateau, and a neighbor half a mile or quarter mile away came in and reported that when he, if he stood on the toilet of the second floor master bathroom, he could see it, and therefore, they needed to move it. Well, that's not a, anything like a prime design view that needs to be defended. So, I, and I think those judgments are utterly unique to every circumstance, and so I understand that. But I don't think we should be leaving ourselves open to the wide-open vagueness that, that allows disagreements to arise within if we get a little bit more purposeful, with the language that you have in that first paragraph. And also, I think it's helpful to have the language like the, in the third paragraph on that page, which refers to the prime views that we're defending here in town. Otherwise, a lot of this to me is first-world problems, and I'm not really over angst about it, I'm gonna let others have comments.
I do have some comments, but can I ask you a question first, David? We're having a discussion now at this point, right?
Yeah.
Have we closed? If you were to imagine a situation where the prime view is being impacted, would that mean then the new construction couldn't happen?
It, every circumstance would be, you know, unique, and it would be a matter of, is there any available development space on that other property, other than the one that's being used? You know, is there a shape of that new development that could be improved, that would allow the main view to be preserved? It's a, you know, you don't, I would say, don't encourage people to go around poking a stick in other people's eyes. And, and yet, we don't necessarily need to, you know, preserve the view that somebody can only see if they crink their neck around the side of a deck.
Yeah, I mean, I, I come down on the side of very, I think Adam's got it right. I don't, I don't, I just, I respect everything you're saying, David, but I, I think we've got too many laws and too many words already, and that the wiggle room is frankly, if you trust the decision makers, it's better to give him or her latitude to make a decision based on the circumstances. The times when you sort of hyper-regulate something is when you have concern that the decision makers are not acting appropriately. So, you can have a, under the guise of like making something very objective, you can in fact introduce such a heightened level of specificity that it doesn't allow for the flexibility of the vagaries of every weird situation that we have. I mean, every property's different. The reason I ask you the question about the prime thing is that that's the one word that became kind of significant during the most recent application I'd never kind of thought through, which is, it was this, the view that was being impacted, and clearly there was an impact to a view, but it wasn't the primary view. I didn't know whether that's like a normal thing, that word, or not. We were able to find our way around it, so I'm not sure I'm in favor of adding language, but it was something that I was, I had my mind made up on. My own sense of it is that we're better off not trying to put too much additional words into it, that's my own sense of it.
So are we, I can, let me back up, we're basically discussing, we're providing directions.
Well, yeah, so, okay, so.
The staff.
So I'm, I would not ask staff to do anything at this point, except possibly continue to make process improvements. I agree with almost everything Jennifer said, by the way, and also, and by the way, your points are very well taken, Ms. Martin. I recognize how important the pre-planning, these are sort of minor, not minor, process things that Adam's already working on, and I think his staff can do, which is have a pre-planning thing, critically important.
Pictures.
Yeah, the pictures are just like key.
Pictures.
Right, and I think those are, and I like, I mean, the straightforward suggestions from Jennifer makes sense to me, which is to make sure that, I assume, by the way, what she meant when she said have the neighbors sign off. A lot of neighbors are never, never, never going to prove it, but they will, you can at least get a confirmation, they've had a copy of what the actual thing is. And so the sign off in the sense that the notice has not only been mailed to that, but that there's some heightened level of, of awareness that for sure they got it, or if they didn't, they're putting their head in the sand. And the requirement to visit neighbors' windows, that makes a lot of perfect sense. I think it presumes human nature is going to be nice, and that people will, when they see the reality of it, will do something. That is not my impression of human nature, but that makes sense to me. So I agree with those suggestions, but those are all, unfortunately, Adam, some additional work for you, but I would not ask Adam or his staff to initiate any kind of work program to develop additional policies or change additional ordinance. I would do it to change the way his process works before, makes it to the planning commission, and after that to us. Sorry.
So, are you basically saying option one then?
Uh.
Initiate to develop further policies such as view.
No.
No, you're not saying that.
Uh, possibly two, two.
Possibly two.
Two, which says direct staff not to initiate a work program to develop further policies, and I would probably use the word but, but continue to make design review process improvements aimed at minimizing view impact concerns. And those, I think, would capture the things that Ms. Martin and Ms. Larson had to say, but would not introduce additional laws from us. That's my, my sense of it. The other thing I recognize, guys, I'm a straight-up lame duck at this point, so, I won't, and so is Jim.
Weren't you on, weren't you on the earlier council that asked them, that asked Adam to do this work and come forward with, with view standards?
He made it that he was probably at the center on that. But there were three.
I'm quite content to change my mind as often as necessary. But this really is, David, Eli and Bob ought to be weighing in more heavily, frankly.
Try to come on up. Okay. Well. Go ahead. Okay. So I'll just say, I know that when we were actually having the, the planning appeal up here, like, what, two meetings ago, I did say that it seemed to me to illustrate the, the fact that we needed more regulation. Part of that was that I was hoping that it would, you know, take some of the contention out of this process for, for homeowners who are, you know, developing and for their neighbors. And part of that was that I just know that we had talked about that previously at our strategic retreat in like 2018. But this, this perspective that I'm hearing from Adam, that, you know, in fact, that might be counterproductive, is new to me, and especially in light of your feeling that, you know, it's, it's by no means assured that, you know, more strict or, or hard and fast regulations are gonna really have any material impact on how many appeals we get. You know, I'm, I'm open on this, I think, you know, it, I, I guess the bottom line is I defer to your judgment and the, and judgment of my colleagues who have been doing this for a lot longer than me. The, the planning appeal that I was at two meetings ago was my first ever, so I don't want to like overreact to that or anything. And if it's, you know, if it seems to be the consensus of my more seasoned colleagues that, you know, this is actually maybe not necessary, then that makes sense to me.
Then what's not necessary?
More regulation or more like.
More regulation.
Yeah.
So we won't, no ordinance, but Adam should continue to.
But definitely process.
To develop his planning guide, planning department guidelines. Is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I'm saying.
I think we were in agreement generally.
Yeah.
And I think I'm kind of in the same spot, I'm basically saying option one.
Oh, I was saying two, you're saying one?
Yeah, but you have enough caveats in two that it's almost number one.
Your eye, okay.
By the time you're done, so. Basically, we're saying don't change the ordinance, but continue to develop policies and guidelines that will help guide the process and try to add some clarity to it. I understand the point about the law, because I know when this came up years ago, I talked to the council members from Belvedere, and they have a very clear view ordinance, like crystal clear. It's about a primary view, and you've got to protect it, and that's what's protected, and nothing else is protected. And I totally understand your point. I mean, you want to purposely leave it vague, I understand that, but providing some guidelines, I think, is a really, really helpful thing for all of us and will help us work through this in the future, because, you know, we're going to continue to get these, obviously. This is always the issue when there's an appeal, it's always about view.
Can I give, make one small comment? Belvedere, Tiburon and Sausalito are ripe for lawsuits related to views, all the time, like, all the time.
Oh, yeah.
So, I don't know if your office has seen it, I see it in my office all the damn time. So, and part of that is you give, you give some weight to a challenge, be it administratively or an appeal, when you have a hard and fast regulation, which you can point to and say, view ordinance number 22A sub 3B says a primary view from my living room, that's the one that counts, and I can see the bay. Alternatively, the kind of discretionary, so not in, not the law itself, but your, your application of that law, that discretionary review making is not ordinarily challengeable. So when we sit up here and we make our, those findings, which are based on fact, not the law itself, but the facts that they applied to the law, you can't, it's, an appeal of that is virtually impossible. The way you challenge it is you say, aha, they did not follow the express language in ordinance number 123. So I think we doom our town to more litigation if we increase the specificity with which those ordinances are written.
Spoken like an attorney.
Sorry.
Well, but in terms of the planning document, and I'm looking at, I guess it's either page 106 or 17, depending on which one it is. Step two, view evaluation. I'd have them, have the staff think of a couple more questions. What mitigations are available? You know, if you take the building and you rotate it 10 degrees, will that?
Where are you, Jim?
Uh.
Page what?
17.
17. Okay, it's basically the.
Right.
Okay. And then whether you want to mark down whether it's primary or secondary, I don't know. And then lastly, I hope the town will avoid, whenever I've heard folks talk about views, they always say, Tam, the bay. Well, as somebody who lives kind of in the flats, so I'm in the bottom of the bowl, it's the ridge lines, you know, up on Christmas, up on Chapman Park that's important to me. I don't, your neighborhood, is it?
Yeah, I can see Mount Tam over my back fence, the tip of it.
Right, and then, but other hillsides.
See Ring Mountain from the front.
Yeah, so, you know, that, you know, that's, you know, when it comes to write the ordinance, don't do it, because you're going to have to say the bay or Tam.
Right.
Then the rest of us will be left out. And then lastly, the point about privacy.
Yeah.
What can you do about collecting of the evidence or discussing with the, either the applicant or the appellant, before you take the pictures, to get a sense of being able to preserve their privacy? Because I know if somebody came through and took pictures of my house.
Oh, in terms of when you.
All over the place, and then posted it publicly.
It's a good question, I, I don't, I don't know, I'd have to talk about that, because I think one of the things that we look at, and this is in our internal policy, is I think, I, I take a pretty literal reading of that finding, and it does say views plural. And so I think of the situation where somebody has this incredible front and back views, panoramic, on the front, they got the bay at the, about Mount Tam and the ridges, and you're, out of one of those windows, you may be impacting one of those ridge lines, but really, in the whole scheme of things, you kind of, without, if, if you're just focused on that one image through that one window of the ridge line, that may be impacted, and you make, even start going down the road of significantly impacted, but then you realize the rest of the house has panoramas of the bay and the Mount Tam and whatnot, and this house that's going in, or the addition is just one little corner out the side window of that. And that's where I, I think, I feel it's important to take pictures of, give the full context of that property. And so I don't, I understand that raises privacy concerns for the individual, and they're, we've had, you know, they wonder why we're going into, need to take pictures of other, of other rooms, but to me, that's important information that we need to incorporate into that decision. And I don't, I don't really, I don't have a great answer for it right now.
Can you?
Other than, if somebody says, don't go in, and we're not going to go, but we'll, we'll just have to note that as part of our evaluation, we weren't able to go into these rooms, we weren't able to do this.
Well, could you at least maybe walk through the various rooms with the person, and then explain, I want to take a picture.
Absolutely. Yeah, we, and we could maybe have a clear handout or something that describes why we feel that's important and why we do this, and.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, and maybe that will help let somebody understand the reasoning behind it, but I, sometimes I think that's necessary for an evaluation, but again, if somebody doesn't want us to go in there. And that, that also creates challenges, because there may be reasons why, you know, somebody doesn't want to see that view out that window, but I, you know, I don't know, it's, it's, it gets very complicated, and this gets very difficult for staff sometimes to, to walk into, when we have to evaluate things from literally inside somebody's house, that, whether that's privacy or views, that's challenging. It, it does get very personal, I think, and I, and I understand the concerns that residents have. I'd probably have the same ones, but I don't know, it's not, it's in the ordinance that we have to evaluate those things, so.
But do you have to put them all in the package, or can you?
I think that if the decisions are based on the evidence, that has to be in the record. We don't necessarily have to put all of them, but I don't know how else to really get that to the, the public in a, in a responsible way.
I would like a synopsis of the decision.
It's, it's the resolutions, we do, and I will just say, you know, we try to, to the comment that was made before, you know, we've taken another process, I think, that we've taken very seriously into heart, is we try to really go through those. we've taken very seriously into heart, is we try to really go through those findings and spend a lot of time explaining exactly what the evidence was used to make those findings and the rationale behind being able to say that it does not, or in some cases, it may actually create an impact. But we've taken a lot of effort, and it does take a lot of time to put those findings together, we carefully think about those.
So do you think we've reached a consensus?
Sounds like it. So we're saying no, no ordinance at this time, but continued process improvements, kind of in the vein of what we've heard from members of the public.
And do what you can.
Exactly right.
To preserve privacy.
Privacy next, next time, Jim.
What?
Next time, we'll get to privacy.
And post all plans on the internet, and I don't care if the engineers don't want you to do it.
Okay. Thank, thank you very much. Thank you.
You can't do that.
The next item is 6C.
Adam, don't post the plans on the internet.
Oh, 6B. Consideration of possible action to assign council members to subcommittees for board, commission, and committee interviews. Rebecca.
Thank you, Mayor Andrews and Council. This should be brief. Basically, the item before you was to consider whether you would like to reappoint committees that will be interviewing vacancies to the Planning Commission and to the Parks and Recreation Commission. As you know, tomorrow is Election Day, and our two candidates for Town Council, unopposed once, when they are seated on April 7th, will both be vacating their respective terms on the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission, and both of those terms expire June 30th, 2021. We do have an open application period for the regular appointments commencing Ju-, July 1st, 2020, and expiring 2022. But that is farther down the road, with those interviews likely being scheduled for May at some point. So you don't necessarily need to revisit all of the subcommittees at this point, because you would do that once the new council is seated and reorganized. But in the meantime, next week or early the week after, before the March 17th meeting, we are hoping to have interviews for those applicants interested in being appointed to the shortened seats to both the Planning Commission and the Parks and Recreation Commission. And currently, the council subcommittee for those interviews, for the Planning Commission would be Mayor Andrews and Councilmember Kuhnhart, and for the Parks and Recreation Commission, Mayor Andrews and Councilmember Ovazio. There's, there's been question about whether it would make sense to have the subcommittee, the council members assigned to those subcommittees be continuing council members. So I thought I'd bring this before the council and allow you the opportunity to discuss and possibly make new appointments if you wish.
So I mean, well, I guess you wanna ask public comment. I have something to say about this. Go ahead.
Any public comment?
I think the issue came up, because I, I thought I was doing Planning Commission interviews, because I've been doing them since the first day, but I forgot you booted me off of that one this year. So, but the, my opinion, even though it doesn't about me anymore, remains the same, which is that, you know, God bless you, Jim, but I think these decisions for who the next Planning Commissioner and Parks Rec ought to be the continuing council members.
I think Charles should find his replacement, and Fred should find his.
But I mean, that's, there's a, you know, a sequential problem with doing that. So I, I think, you know, Dave, you should stay on the planning, and Bob, you should stay on Parks and Rec, and then Eli, and you guys should disperse yourselves in such a way that you have two people as the subcommittee for that. That would be my suggestion. It's just, it's just for this next week, and then after that, you guys can have a whole new thing.
Yeah, no, that makes sense.
By the way, if you really want Jim or me to do it, we'll do it. I just, I don't think we should.
But I believe you do not, the interviewers do not have to be on council, correct?
It's the council's prerogative. You can appoint a member, an individual who is not currently seated on the council to any standing committee if you, if you wanted to. That has, yeah.
So my bias would be to have Charles Lee on the Planning Commission in addition to David.
We're trying to figure out what to do for March 17th.
I know.
Okay, so he's not gonna be on the council?
I know.
So you wanna, you wanna appoint him?
He doesn't have to be.
I see what you're doing. Okay, sorry, missed that.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, so, and the same with Fred with Parks and Recreation Commission, because that would provide some continuity going forward as well, so.
So you were being serious. You weren't being facetious. You were, you were being serious.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry.
Can we draft you?
I'm not participating in this, so you guys do your thing.
Is it too self-interested to have sort of self-perpetuation, like let's pick Planning Commission, rather than having an elected picking?
Well, in terms of what would happen, as I recall, they interview, and then they make a recommendation to the elected council. So it would still come back to us on March 17th, right?
Correct.
Okay, so, but I would like the next council members to be able to participate in this, if they're willing to.
If they're willing, yeah. No objection?
Yeah, I mean, I'm not necessarily opposed. It just, I don't know, I feel like when you break with, you know, however many decades of precedent, you should generally have a, a great reason.
I guess my concern is just having an existing Planning Commission member interview and pick a replacement when he's actually still on the Planning Commission or vacating it, especially because the Planning Commission is so, I mean, I think it's the most difficult position in town. It's the most contentious, it's, you know, so I would feel a little odd about that, I think.
Actually, I'm looking at the calendar. I'm anticipating trying to convene interviews on either March 12th, Monday, March 16th, or Tuesday, March 17th, in the afternoon, just before the start of the council meeting. And both current commissioners, soon-to-be council members, would have a Planning Commission meeting, their final Planning Commission meeting, March 24th, and their final Parks and Rec Commission meeting, March 23rd. So they would not yet be done with their service.
Okay, so maybe we should just keep it to current council members?
Okay.
Right. I think that's what I would do, yeah.
And continuing council members.
Sure, yeah, okay. So I'll jump on planning or Parks and Rec, I don't care. Bob, you seem like you maybe have strong feelings about planning. Would you like to join that committee?
I'll jump on planning, yeah.
Okay, I'll do Parks and Rec.
Okay, good. Great, okay.
Does somebody need to make a motion, or that's it?
No, they're not usually done by motion, just by mayoral appointment.
Okay. Does that work for you, Mr. Mayor?
You're appointed.
Okay, thanks.
All right. You've been appointed? Yeah, so 6.
C.
6C. Discuss and consider adoption of Resolution 11, 2020, approving reinstatement of the recreation coordinator classification.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This is a two-meeting business item per council policy. This item was reviewed by the Town Council at its February 18th meeting. Council was supportive and requested action, supportive of the requested action, and staff was directed to bring back a resolution for additional discussion at this meeting for possible adoption. No facts have changed from the staff report from the last meeting, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
No question.
No questions.
Any public comment?
What's the specific motion you want, Paul?
It's under the.
So I move to approve or adopt Resolution Number 11, 2020, approving reinstatement of recreation coordinator classification, revisions to job description and establishment of a salary range of 5,200 to 6,321 per month.
Second.
Councilmember Bailey.
Yes.
Councilmember Kuhnhart.
Yes.
Councilmember Ovazio.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Beckman.
Yes.
Mayor Andrews.
Yes. Now, yeah, mandatory report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Just one quick update, as you heard from Marla Orth previously, we're taking a guest, aggressive approach to vegetation management. One of the things, at her recommendation and the recommendation of Ruben Martin, our fire marshal, is to hold a stakeholders' meeting with PG&E, which we have been meeting with them, but PG&E, Caltrans, and county open space. A lot of our threatened areas within town are right outside our jurisdiction. The northbound Highway 101 lanes, if you think about that, between Corder Madera and Mill Valley is Caltrans, that hillside. It's, it really hasn't been maintenance in, in a long, long time. And then the open area of the Alto Bowl in Mill Valley, which is open space. And so we're trying to engage them to really, to either help them or to get them to do something to protect our jurisdiction.
Is the them Mill Valley or Caltrans?
Well, part of it is Cal-, so on the Mill Valley side, part of it is Caltrans, part of it is Marin County open space, and part of it is the city of Mill Valley. I think what, so what staff is gonna come back to you with at one of the next meetings, we're gonna try to put things in place through Marla, to use billy goats if possible, or to come up with a plan thereof. But it would be to get approval from those jurisdictions to do some work upfront. We would like to share the cost, we'd like them to do that.
Billy goats, please do billy goats.
I'm gonna, just for you.
They're multi-gender.
But one of the questions for council is, we have about 100,000 left in this year's plan, but we may do, ask you for a budget amendment. If the fire marshal agrees that it is an exigent circumstance, we would potentially be spending money outside of our jurisdiction, you know, and so there's gonna be a question.
Protect our jurisdiction.
But it will protect our jurisdiction, but we will, it's coming your way. I just wanted to give you a heads up. If you have any questions in advance, please check in with me, but that'll be coming back to you quickly, and we look at it as a priority.
And if we do do the Alto Bowl to get the ravines, which are sort of the shoots that the wind will come up if it's, depending on which way it's blowing, and that would be a sort of a future fire path, those definitely have to be done by goats. You can't get manpower down there. One hour looked at it over the weekend. And the other thing I'd like you to consider, and just get your reaction, is I've been told that in terms of the contractors clearing the brush, they're very unhappy with using electric.
Mr. Mayor, we may want to be careful at this. We may want to add upcoming agenda items. That may be a slight opening narrow to, to give the council a quick update, yeah.
Good, thank you.
Other reports?
No.
Okay, we have a couple. TAM, at our last TAM Board of Commissioners meeting, Tony Tavara's, the Caltrans Regional Director, came. I, I took, took advantage of the opportunity to tell him how much we admired him and that Todd Cusmano was in his favor as he was considering doing some things in our favor. I gave him a hard time for not finishing the fence by, beside the highway next to Nordstrom's, but he took note of that. And then I, I also got him to say that very imminently, they will be commencing the widening of the bicycle pedestrian crossing of Corder Madera Creek on the side of the bridge. This is a project that I started talking about a year ago, was supposed to happen last summer, but it is theirs, it's budgeted, it's ready to go, they're gonna start it very soon. Also, the, did I mention the e-bike sharing program, 300 e-bikes that are gonna be acquired and that, from Gotcha? I mentioned that? Well, that's, that is advancing. This is serving both Sonoma and, and Marin. The first initial place is where they, they need hubs, and one of the hubs is definitely going to be the ferry terminal, one of the hubs is gonna be the smart train stations. We may choose to say, well, we'd like a hub, and it will be in a sacrificing of one or two parking spaces for these little, essentially colored blocking spots where those bikes can be brought if we thought we had a place where bicycle commuters were arriving. It could be here at Town Hall, it could be, you know, from people come down on the smart train, it could be one of our malls, but they're looking for hubs by this summer. Keep that in mind. And then, let's see, there was, we, we had a considerable discussion of back and forth on EV vehicles, and TAM is continuing its policy of putting maximum effort and minimum dollars towards the promotion of EVs, and then working with other agencies to pull the dollars in and to leverage those dollars. All good, but some of us commissioners were suggesting that they really needed to start setting serious goals for increasing registration of EV vehicles, partly because that helps us and our own businesses here in Corder Madera. Baywave, the Baywave County Committee met, Route 37 planning was the top on the agenda. Route 37 is, it, by anybody's imagination, gonna be a very, very expensive bit to improve. And our Marin segment is the lowest segment of Marin 37, and that's the one that has been flooding three times in the last three years. And so there's a group of agencies that are working on how to solve that problem. It's gonna probably ultimately be a combination, in my mind, of new levees and an elevated roadway, because we don't have enough dirt anywhere near Marin to fill up the amount of altitude that needs to be filled in. Saferoots to School had an audit session right near Lucky Drive, and we're looking at all the different potential improvements along Lucky Drive for the sake of bicycles, pedestrians, and sea level rise. And so Parisian Associates was in on that. RJ was, is right on top of this and has some good ideas, and there's a very good little group that's working on those next steps for improving the, from, not one, Pfeiffer to Redwood High, and including our access to our, our corp yard, which was apparently cut off by water this year. Let's see. MCCMC, we had our first meeting of our Climate Action Committee of MCCMC. Claire McAuliffe and I are co-chairs. We focused on that conversation on green building codes, advancing green building codes. So there's a lot of interest in that topic. We had Allison Miller from the county there, and if there's anything else that you would like from me on that, I'd be delighted to, to share. We're beginning a good activity there. And Vice Mayor is going to announce the results of today's first meeting, I think. I think he'd like to do that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Chamber of Commerce held its February mixer at the newly opened Fieldwork Brewery in Town Center, and it was the most wildly successful Chamber of Commerce mixer I have ever seen. It was fantastic, so that was very exciting.
I'm sorry I missed that. Was it well attended?
It was fantastic. It was a packed house. It was really cool.
The year's good, too.
Yeah, so, very, very awesome, good stuff all around. We did, as David mentioned, have our first meeting of our new Climate Action Committee today, so it was myself, David, Todd, Rebecca, and 12 members of the public, and it was fantastic, lot of energy, a lot of good ideas brought to the table, so I'm excited to see the work that we're able to generate going forward. And then last quick item, I just reached out to our school district, just with an eye to this whole coronavirus thing, I just wanna check in with them and make sure that, you know, they're comfortable with everything, and they've got, you know, plans and stuff, and they don't anticipate needing anything from us, and they, it sounds like they're all good, they've got the situation under control, they're working with the, you know, the county health department, so things are all good there. That is all.
Sure. So one of the committees I sit on is the Legislative Committee from the Marin County Council, amazing council members. I am the vice chair of that committee. I'm, as you know, leaving shortly, so this is Fred and David and Eli. Bob, one of you guys is gonna have to step into the breach here. Good luck and God bless, and here's why. Good luck and God bless, and here's why. 3,360 new bills were introduced this year. 3,360, Jesus. So...
That's 100 per member of the Assembly.
I mean, that is a lot of legislation. Anyway, that's significant because, you know, the, our county association there hires these professional analysts in Sacramento who filters through to see what will affect us locally. And they said that's going to take some time just to begin to understand what's happening, so that's coming up. But Senate Bill Number 50, as you know, has experienced some difficulty. This has to do with increasing housing and so forth, but it largely is being morphed into a new bill, an assembly bill, I think by Bloomsfeld, called AB 1279. So those, the substantive parts of SB 50 are very much in Sacramento and something which will be a continuing part of the discussion and requires some vigilance going forward. At each of these meetings, after the professional analysts give a report from Sacramento on the telephone, we then have reports from Assemblyman Mark Levine's office, one from Senator Mike Levine, and then one from Nancy Hall Bennett from League of California Cities. I think you know her reasonably well, Eli. So Mark Levine's office said that his agenda for this upcoming year has to do a lot with the power safety shut-off events, PSPS. What does that stand for again?
Public Safety Power Shut-Off.
Public Safety Power Shut-Off. And at length, it's all about how to try to harden our system and to help our county and our localities survive better. So he's got at least four new assembly bills on that, general emergency-related things. Senator McGuire's office, his priorities or his new bills for the coming year include things like the, that TOT revenue for like our hotels and so forth. In other words, dealing with, you know, bed and breakfast, or rather, you know, trying to get the money from our hotels and to have it reported properly. A new commission on home hardening, so similar to this, like preparing for fires, and then school meals. I don't know, whatever, that's his thing. Okay, and then League of California Cities is all about funding for infrastructure as well as housing. So those are the two biggest governor's goals, I think, for this year, which our local representatives are, want to be helpful with, but don't want it to intrude too much on local control. And that's the only real report I have. We have not had a Marin Clean Energy meeting, which is the other big one I go to.
Okay. A disaster prep council meeting today, nothing really significant to report from that. We had a BPAC meeting last week, and the big item discussed, you may remember, I think was the last meeting we had people speak about, the proposed roundabout near the Town Center at Tamalpais and Madera. So that was one of the items we talked about, and RJ did an incredible presentation where, this has actually been going on for two years. This project is not new, and it's part of a, and what he did that I thought was great was showed how it's part of a complete streets project, which basically goes from Tamalpais to Pfeiffer and takes that whole corridor and makes improvements all along that corridor with pedestrian crossings and changing curbs and adding bike lanes. And the roundabout is part of it. One of the people at the meeting said the roundabout was $2.5 million. We clarified in that meeting, it's actually, the whole project, complete streets for that corridor is about 3.7. The roundabout is about 800 to 900, and there was a lot of information provided on the roundabout and talked about, and there was a lot of public comment about it. But they did a great presentation and really helped clarify the whole thing. It was a good meeting.
Before you move on from that, Rebecca, do we post or can you get the, can we post that stuff? The number of heat generated by this roundabout is significant. If we can get it publicly available, that would be useful.
We actually publish...
Yeah, there was a really great presentation, and it is...
It's on video, but we do take the council comments from the end of each council meeting and reiterate them in the week's newsletter on Fridays.
Okay. Wait, and so if I'm John Q. Public and go onto our website and find that presentation that Bob just went to?
If you go to the video, I mean, of the meeting, it's, the whole presentation's on video. It's about 15 minutes.
Perfect.
You can watch the whole thing, and it puts the whole thing into context and shows you, you know, how it fits into the whole...
Okay.
It shows you how it fits into the whole street, which is really important because it's part of a much larger plan.
He has a really good paragraph summary with the link, and so what I'll do is I'll send that to all of you so you have it, and I'll ask them to actually post like a notice alert on our website so people can go to it more easily because it has...
I would appreciate that. I think it's, you know, sometimes things rise above the fray. This one is causing, it would be nice to have it available.
And we also, RJ and I met with kind of the core group of concerned citizens that are in that specific area. We met with them today.
Oh, good.
And we're going to continue. We've asked them to help us get a broader group if necessary. We're going to follow up in three weeks. It really has come down now to statistics and facts and what drove us to a roundabout compared to a four-way stop, and so that conversation will continue before it does come back to the council.
Okay, I just was thinking...
And one of the things it talks about is, you know, the reduction in, you know, increase in traffic safety, increase, huge increase in pedestrian safety, increase in bike safety, reduced emissions. And I thought one of the most interesting facts is that whenever a roundabout is proposed in the United States, about 75% of the population is against it, and within one year of it being installed, about 75% of the population thinks it's a fantastic thing, so.
I'll also point out that a roundabout with planting in the middle looks a lot better than a four-way paved intersection.
Well, yeah, and from a pedestrian standpoint, which that intersection is terrible for pedestrians. The pedestrians only have to cross one lane of traffic. It's designed specifically to, and they can make eye contact and see, so it's just a huge safety increase. So anyway, but you can see the whole thing. RJ did a fantastic job.
RJ's doing a good job.
Yeah, he's done a great job.
I can direct you all to the Tamal Vista Boulevard Complete Streets Project webpage on the town's website.
Oh, that's perfect.
And if you scroll to the bottom...
Thank you, Rebecca. I just, I wasn't familiar enough with our own website, so I apologize for that. Thank you for pointing it out. Great.
Thank you, that's it.
As a 40-year fan of roundabouts, I decided to go to that and sat in the back and just listened, and I agreed. RJ and David Parisi did excellent job in explaining the benefits.
Yeah, do we have to all buy cars like the Massachusetts beaters?
Massachusetts beater? What?
Beta.
Oh.
A car where you, if you put in a $30 battery, you double your capital investment and driving around in winter. Remember that?
Call them rotaries in Massachusetts.
Rotaries, yeah. So, anyway, any other reports? Okay, the next item is the next, the draft agenda for next time?
Didn't somebody bring up something? David, did you have something you wanted on the agenda or am I misremembering that?
This is the mayor.
Oh.
This is your opportunity, if you wanted to. I won't because it was a straight 5-0 for not to have any exemptions, so you can do it, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, wait, what is this?
What? Sorry, I don't want to unnerve you.
He's hiding. With the brush abatement program, we've, Marla has started noticing that contractors really don't want to give up their gas-fired, gas-powered blowers, and they think that the electric ones are much less efficient, and at least one of them has been enticed to another, working in another jurisdiction by them being, the other jurisdiction being able to say, hey, you know, you don't have to use electric leaf blowers, you can use a gas-powered one. So I'm just throwing that out, how we, whether there's any way we can allow these contractors to do that in the future.
You're asking to put that on the agenda?
Yeah, and I'm just getting reactions before I do it.
The only question is whether it should be on the agenda. If you want to put it on the agenda, I'm good with it.
Okay. I'll have to talk with the mayor. David, Eli?
Yeah, I mean, if you want to agendaize it, go for it.
Okay. If you want to agendaize it, go for it.
We can't discuss it substantively.
We can't talk about it. Okay.
And the only other thing is, maybe I'll save it for this, I put all my favorite things on this agenda because I'm going to be in Cabo with the kids this week during this next council meeting, so I will miss you all, but I'll have to be thinking of you. Thank you.
So, is that everything? It's a wrap? We're adjourned?
Thank you.
Thank you.